Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
I'm here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of June 2nd, 2020?
So moved, Days.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The June 2nd, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive and file same motion for item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four, 4th District.
See file and the liquor license be denied for the reasons cited by the Director of Revenue in the communication.
Is there a second?
Second. Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five.
Receive, file, and refer to the county auditor, and that will be the order.
Item number six, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seven, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the change of address be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number nine.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested, and that will be the order.
Item number 10.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 11, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Under Other Communications, item number one, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 6th District.
See file, county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, 5th and 3rd Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number four.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. Report of the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. Everyone in St. Louis County deserves to be served and protected by an appropriately-funded, fully-staffed, and thoughtfully-trained police department, whose officers are accountable for their actions and interactions. The St. Louis County Police Department seeks to live up to the community's expectations and ordinarily does an exemplary job. The tragic death of George Floyd shined a spotlight on the use of force policies and practices in police departments around the country. The Can't Wait campaign identified eight policies the local police departments should adopt to prevent officers from inappropriate use of force. I strongly support that campaign, and I am proud to tell people that the St. Louis County Police Department has all eight of those policies in place. I am proud that the police department provides the public an annual report on the use of force officers, contributes data to the Center for Policing Equity's National Justice Database, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation's National Use of Force Data Collection. Additionally, the police department has established an early intervention system and implements more training than the state requires. The department has provided several important training sessions in recent years concerning de-escalation and preventing bias in racial profiling. Adopting the right policies and training programs are critical, but these are only the beginning steps. We must also ensure that the policies and training are having the intended effect. Accordingly, I ask that the Board of Police Commissioners conduct a thorough and professional review of the St. Louis County Police Department's use of force policies and training, engage the public by including a diverse range of input, experiences, and stories in the analysis, publicly report the findings of that review, and seek community feedback, and where necessary, reform the use of force policies and training programs. While the Board does its review, I will be meeting and listening to a wide variety of viewpoints to understand how we can take this moment and finally make meaningful changes that improves public trust and reduces crime. Our police department is filled with good, hard-working professionals who understand their role and serve proudly. The department's call to action must be to create a better filter for rooting out those few who are not cut out to be police officers, so they don't undermine all the great work of the others on the force. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Report of special committees.
Well, first, I would like to receive file and the report dated June 2nd, 2020 be adopted as submitted.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And now I'll have my report from this morning's meeting. In our oversight meeting this morning, the biggest items for discussion were housing, the Small Business Relief Program, and the police portion of the CARES budget. After a quick update about the 5.9 million allocated to childcare providers, we had a pretty in-depth discussion about housing in St. Louis County, and the $12 million St. Louis County CARES is allocating to address housing insecurity by providing rental assistance to landlords, renters, and those in mortgage arrears, as well as utility support, legal assistance, and homeless prevention services, all of which are being allocated according to the Health and Economic Risk Index, which considers health, poverty rates, unemployment rates... Excuse me. We saw in slides today how closely correlated health risk is to economic insecurity, and it's really alarming. The Small Business Relief Program applications are going through the audit process, and we currently have 900 audited applications totaling just over $10 million in requests. The deadline for compliance is tomorrow, and we do expect this number to rise, although currently we are below budget in each council district. Councilmembers will start receiving batches of applications on June 15th, and we hope to be cutting checks on July 6th. Funding for the police is less than 1% of the county CARES budget, and the vast majority of those expenses are for the St. Louis County Emergency Operations Center. We did ask for a deeper breakdown of those expenses to be covered in next week's meeting. We meet every Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m. by WebEx and encourage the public to join us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. We will move into the public forum portion of our meeting this evening. I want to remind everyone of a couple things. This forum can be a source of pride for all of us and can serve as a positive example to residents and other policymaking bodies in our community. So I encourage every person who participates to speak with tolerance and respect towards the council, towards each other, and to other leaders in county government. To remind everyone of the rules for the forum, only comments sent to councilcomments@stlouisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least one hour prior to the meeting, is said to start, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain your name and physical address. The email must be 400 words or less. This is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is what we typically allow during the in-person meetings. The administrative director or designee will read your comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the Journal. With that, Madam Clerk, please read the first speaker.
Yes, Madam Chair, this evening we have 20 public comments.
Madam Chair, the first speaker tonight is Shannon L. McCullough, DVM, 9948 Litzinger Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63124. Dear St. Louis County Council, where are the voices of reason in our community? Where are the leaders? Are they leading? Are they bringing us together? Are our leaders talking about unity and healing and peace? Our so-called leaders are silent. Oh, they may be saying some things that they think they should be saying to the media. They're silent in their actions. Silent. It is time to open all businesses. If it is okay to march in protest, side by side, shouting and singing, while marching without masks, it is time to open churches with no restrictions. We cannot allow the insanity to continue. We cannot give in to anarchy, whether it be the crazy and completely without merit restrictions placed on us because of COVID-19, or the complete breakdown of civility with the violence and riots that are going unchecked in our cities. Nelson Mandela said that, end quote, "No one is born hating another person because of the color of his skin, or his background, or his religion." People must learn to hate. If they can learn to hate, they can be taught to love. For love comes more naturally to the human heart than its opposite." The churches teach about love. The churches teach about healing and peace. Open our churches now. We cannot give in to the enemy, or all is lost. On my knees in prayer, Shannon L. McCullough, DVM. Following comment from Amy Eichman, 2142 White Lane Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri. Dear Dr. Page and Council, I am very concerned about my St. Louis community. I'm struggling to understand why our nursing homes were not the top priority from day one of this COVID-19 event. The overall survival rate for most is extremely high, around 99%, but it was known from very early on that the elderly with underlying health conditions were at the highest risk of death with COVID-19. I'm struggling to understand why masks are still being pushed on the healthy. An article in the New England Journal of Medicine dated May 2020, see link attached, states, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection. The desire for widespread masking is a reflexive reaction to anxiety over the pandemic. Why are we even thinking about making young people wear masks outside in summer heat and sunshine at a properly chlorinated public swimming pool? What data is driving that thought? Masks might simply be a nice symbol, as Dr. Fauci recently said. I'm struggling to understand why businesses that wish to safely open up to feed their families and serve their communities have been bullied, snitched on, and sued. Ozarks teenagers were held up to national ridicule for behaving like teenagers, and God help those who came out to protest the stay-at-home orders because they were being accused of 'super-spreader serial killers' in the press. Hateful commentators wished death from COVID-19 on them. But BLM protesters were permitted to violate social distancing guidelines openly in large numbers in close contact with police protection. Apparently, our community leaders and press only protect the speech and civil liberties of some. To whom on the council this is obvious and dangerous double acceptable standard? Is the virus a real threat, or isn't it? I'm struggling to understand why Police Captain David Dorn had to die. This wonderful man was murdered to protest the death of George Floyd, a man who didn't live or die in St. Louis. On what planet might this make sense? It's a heartbreaking loss caused by the failure of local leaders to lead. The senseless violence was entirely predictable. Political party nonsense and activism must not be permitted to drive public policy. We need a return to common sense, decency, and intelligent debate. Thank you." Excuse me. Following comments from Kim Elias, 51, Portland Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63131. County Council Members and County Executive Page, as we sit back and observe what is going on in our world, we realize what is at stake for every citizen in this country is our freedom. We watch as the far-left leaders attempt to seize our liberty through manufactured quarantines while allowing enormous crowds to gather to destroy our cities. Dr. Page quoted the Pledge of Allegiance recently at a press conference, but omitted the two other important parts of this oath. It states, "One nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Without God and liberty, there will never be justice for all." The majority on this board may believe that if they scare us, we will become angry, lose hope, and give up our faith. The fact is that the more you abuse our Constitution, the more our faith grows. You can attempt to stop people of faith from believing, but it is in times such as these where we only grow stronger. We don't need to meet in a building. We don't need to meet in large groups on a specific day. We know that where two or more are gathered, our God is present, and here's our prayers. We are praying for our freedoms to be restored by ethical leaders. We are praying for the people and the communities being destroyed by the void of ethical leaders. We are praying for justice for all those who have not been treated fairly. We are praying for the strength to keep fighting for what is good and right. We will not be filled with hate. We will not give up. As we now know, according to the WHO, asymptomatic people are not as contagious as previously reported. Corona is not spread easily on surfaces, according to the CDC. The WHO does not recommend wearing a mask unless you are caring for someone with COVID-19. And teachers who couldn't teach our students in the classroom gather over 1,000 people in a crowd to protest. Kirkwood School, Saturday, June 6th. It's time to take our country back, open everything up, and ditch the masks. God bless Captain Dorn. May he rest in peace. Kim Elias. Following comment, excuse me. My name is Linda Crenning. I live at 7,200 Christopher, next to 7,190 Christopher. There is so much going on in our world today with no sign of ending, and I feel no one is listening to all the concerns that your decision is causing for the residents of Christopher Drive. What were you thinking when you allowed this to happen? You have the power to stop this, and you won't. How does an out-of-state business have so much control over our neighborhood? Our council is supposed to make the right decisions for the good of the neighborhood, and that's just not happening. I believe the wealth of Montenegro is definitely playing a big part in the decision-making, and that's just not fair. Our council should look at all the facts we have presented and make the right decision for the good of the neighborhood, not to be controlled by a business that could care less about the residents or the neighborhood. They're used to getting their way at any cost, and they don't take no for an answer. It's all about the money. All we are asking is to keep our neighborhood the way it is and not let out-of-state businesses change it just because they can. Do your job and say no to Montenegro. It's the right thing to do. We are not going away. Linda Crenning. Excuse me. Following comment from Terry Desloge, number 2, Fair Lake Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63005. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council, I have a friend that is a police officer in our county, and she said she is required to work 12-hour shifts every day with no days off. Another police officer said gasoline was thrown on him and then fireworks while he was just trying to promote peace with no violence. Do you realize how much abuse the good, well-trained officers in our county are enduring? Just because a priest is convicted of sexual assault, do we reject and abuse all priests? No. Just because a doctor is sued for malpractice, do we stop going to the doctor? No. I'd like to commend the police officers of our county for their long hours, sacrifice, and tireless efforts to protect our communities. It is the county council's responsibility to reinforce their efforts by offering support. We propose an immediate budget adjustment to fund each officer's overtime hours and provide bonuses to the officers that exemplify their vocation by treating all citizens with respect and value. You see, officers need to know that we stand behind them through these peaceful protests and riots because our county needs them. I suggest that you use the CARES money that has been given to St. Louis County to keep these officers safe from COVID-19 by providing protective equipment. Outstanding leaders go out of their way to boost self-esteem from their personnel. It's a quote from Sam Walton. Sincerely, Terry Desloge.
Continuing, Madam Chair. Ron Crenning, 7,200 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. Again, this is about 7,190 Christopher Drive, and the failure to stop this for-profit business to take place a very few feet next to our homes, and we are so concerned this will change our lives forever. This family-owned neighborhood, it will be so disturbing and disruptive to our community we've been caring for decades, and besides all the safety factors that's been ignored with a two-lane, windy road, no curbs, no sidewalks, no streetlights, and a 70-foot drop-off in the backyard of these residences. I dare you to place yourself in our situation and fearing this potential of a constant thorough fear of problems in the future that can be avoided. You wouldn't put this in your neighborhood, and why are you putting this in ours? Do your job and be fair. From Deb Matush, 1455 Cragwald Road, Kirkwood, Missouri, 63122. I find myself confused by the actions of this council and in particular Mr. Page. Prior to assuming the responsibility of St. Louis County Executive, you really weren't known. Each person leaves in the place they serve, whether public or private, a piece of themselves. What we leave in place is dependent upon our actions. You know the phrase, "Your actions speak louder than words." Your actions of the past weeks and months appear double-minded. Here's why. You must social distance six feet. World Health Organization says at least three feet. But you can hold hands, link arms, and march shoulder to shoulder with hundreds without fear of being reprimanded, arrested, or sued, and even be assisted by our wonderful police. No gatherings larger than 10. But you can hold hands, link arms, and march shoulder to shoulder with hundreds without fear of being reprimanded, arrested, or sued, and even be assisted by our wonderful police. No gatherings larger than 10. But you can destroy property, loot and steal, and block traffic shoulder to shoulder without fear of being reprimanded, arrested, or sued, and even be assisted by our wonderful police. You should wear masks, but you can hold hands, link arms, and march shoulder to shoulder without fear of being reprimanded, arrested, or sued, and even be assisted by our wonderful police. Can't go to school, have graduations or weddings or traditional funerals. My aunt died of non-Wuhan virus issues. Go to church or pools, but you can hold hands, link arms, and march shoulder to shoulder without fear of being reprimanded, arrested, or sued. Just a few examples of double-mindedness. And then, Mr. Page, the public statement you made about protests, quote, "suggesting those who protested should self-quarantine." A day late and a dollar short. Damage done. Huge sigh. I'm reminded once again of the House of Pain Jim you made a public example of for trying to keep his livelihood going. You are now the example of what public humiliation of a small business owner looks like when power and control are used against the little guy. Do you remember using the Lake of the Ozarks as a finger wag at the citizens of St. Louis County with a warning of punishment if the numbers crept up? Well, it didn't happen at the lake, and my guess is the same will prove true of the protest. And that's 400 words. From Allison Chodell, 57 Portland Drive, Frontenac, Missouri, 63131. Webster Groves, roughly 300 people gathered here Sunday. St. Louis Post Dispatch, Monday, June 8th, 2020. Hundreds of people on Saturday gathered in two marches to protest. St. Louis Post Dispatch, May 31st. About 1,000 protesters gathered later in the day for a youth march in Frontenac. St. Louis Post Dispatch, June 6th. Hundreds marched through Brettwood, Channel 5, June 5th. Thousands marched against racism Sunday in Webster Groves. StLouisToday.com, June 8th. Quote, "I'm concerned we're reopening too soon and prioritizing economic gain over health and lives, especially for our most vulnerable. My family will continue to social distance with exceptions for groceries and other essentials." Chairwoman Lisa Clancy, Twitter, May 19th. Quote, "Protesters, you are pushing our region to be better. I join protesters in their calls for accountability. I continue to support the rights of nonviolent protesters." Chairwoman Lisa Clancy, Twitter, June 4th. Where is the accountability? Why can protesters gather in thousands, but churches cannot be allowed to fully reopen? Why can protesters gather in thousands, but my children can't play organized team sports? Why can protesters gather in thousands, but my daughter can't be in a pool for competitive swim practice with more than 18 kids at a time in chlorine? Why must hundreds of St. Louis County families travel outside of county boundaries to play baseball, then turn around and come back to the county? Why must St. Louis County residents travel outside boundaries to shop, eat, and worship, then turn around to come back to the county? It's time to stop the power-hungry members of this council and fully open the county. Fully open places of worship. Let children play sports. Allow citizens their constitutional rights to gather when they see fit. Don't tell us that we are reopening too soon and prioritizing economic gain over health, and then encourage people to gather in thousands to protest because you feel they are pushing our region to be better. This is about economic growth and constitutional freedoms. I guess I and thousands of others will continue to spend our money elsewhere. Quote, "They who can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Benjamin Franklin. From Patty Cantor, 8025 Maryland Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63105. Normally, I write about your COVID-19 shutdown overreach, the illogical use of masks, especially outside, or the free rein of protesters concerning social distancing, stopping traffic, et cetera. Today, I'd like to address defunding law enforcement. Will the county councils start their discussion to defund the police? After making law enforcement stand down so often, you might as well start the discussion to defund them today. We need to get in step with other Democratic cities and counties. Many of your rulings tell our citizens what they can and cannot do, how they should and should not do it, and when they can and cannot do it. You seem to like making rules to control your citizens, so here's another opportunity. Let's defund the police now, so you can make even more rules. You can create a social rule for how a person should respond when they have a gun in their face. A social rule for how to respond when a person tries to take your car, purse, or other possessions. A social rule for how to respond when an uninvited stranger is in your home and 911 isn't an option. This will help you stay relevant and engaged. It will also serve to keep our fringe constituents and criminals as happy as possible. Please let me know if I can help in any way. From Kathy and Rich Ellis, 7,140 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. We have not heard any updates or responses to all of the concerns with Montenegro trying to run a medical treatment facility from the home at 7,190 Christopher Drive, and we are asking that you please correct this mistake that was made by the county building department. Please stop Montenegro's request to construct a parking lot to take up most of the front yard in a purely residential neighborhood. The revised statutes of Missouri, 89.020, states that the local zoning authority may require that the exterior appearance of the home and property be in reasonable conformance with the general neighborhood standards. Montenegro's medical treatment facility parking lot would not conform with the general neighborhood standards, and there are no other parking lots in front of any other homes along this narrow, windy residential road. We're asking you to please visit the location so you can determine for yourself that a parking lot with a total of 19 parking spaces would not reasonably conform to the neighborhood. Besides not conforming to neighborhood standards, the amount of proposed parking would reveal the intended use as not a group home, but rather a medical treatment facility treating co-occurring disorders such as eating disorders and substance abuse disorders. The residents of Oakville ask you to please do the right thing. We hope you will investigate what Montenegro's business profile is. We hope you will investigate what Montinito's business profile is. We believe when you do, you will conclude that this is not a group home as described in Missouri statute 89.020. Thank you for your consideration.
Madam Chair, continuing, excuse me, following comment from Bill Bedenstein, 4250 Valley Crest Hills, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128. A petition is being circulated to stop the development of a treatment facility at 7190 Christopher Drive in South St. Louis County near Telegraph Road. I'm wondering if the current zoning permits the use of what the petition says is a for-profit business in a residential area. If not, is there a request for a zoning change? Following comment from Valerie Lawrence, 2715 Sheridan Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63125. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I'm writing today to express thoughts on several issues. First, we continue to have drastic rules and restrictions on businesses reopening. There are so many draconian rules that it seems pointless to even open. For example, so many rules for the reopening of pools and camps. So many rules it doesn't even worth it to open, to even open. So common sense tells me that if we put all these rules in place, they won't open and we, in parentheses, the county, get what we want. The CDC is constantly lowering numbers and now it's less than 1% of the population that is even dying. Why aren't we fully open now? Ridiculous rule of wearing a mask that isn't even protecting us from a virus and even enforcing it in 90-degree weather. People are going to be passing out and then there are more lawsuits. People are constantly touching and taking off their mask and spreading more germs. But you allow protesters to continue in our city where thousands of people are gathered and no social distancing. Why is it okay to protest and riot and destroy property with no rules, but it's not okay to fully open our businesses or go to church? It seems like if it goes with your agenda, that is allowed. It seems like in all of this, the common sense has been thrown out the window. Also, I heard that my taxpayer funds are being used to sue the House of Pain. Why should my hard-earned money go towards this? Sam Page should have used his money to sue House of Pain. He is still getting paid during this pandemic while many people are out of work. This is not right and needs to be addressed. Respectfully, Valerie Lawrence. Following comments from Alex Grandstaff, 308 Clara Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63112. To the county council members, as a resident of St. Louis County, I demand drastic and immediate shifts in the county budget. Let us follow the precedent set by Minneapolis and defund and dismantle the police system. Instead of 45% of the budget going towards policing, let it be directed, let it be redirected to vital services that can better address the needs of our communities. Let that money fund mental health services, domestic and sexual violence counseling and support, housing services, childcare, food programs, and addiction recovery services. The United States has made a grave mistake in expanding the police system. A system founded on combating violence through violent means to address the social needs of communities. Additionally, the increased militarization of police forces via less lethal weapons such as tear gas, rubber bullets, and bean bags, and the violent negligence allowed by qualified immunity policies has only expanded the terroristic power police forces have in communities of color. Let this legacy of violence and terrorism end. Defund the police system in our county. Shift our community response model to focus on de-escalation and serving the public need. Make reparations to families and communities that have been brutalized by officers who live their lives without accountability for the harm they have caused. Sincerely, Alex Grandstaff. Following comments from Tom Sullivan, 751 Syracuse, University City, Missouri, 63130. Madam Chair and members of the council, there are still questions about Bill 109, a proposed $2 million contract with Trinity Services Group Incorporated to provide food services and vocational programs for the county jail. I thought county executive Sam Page could explain why he supports the contract, but he has not. It is now the fourth week since I asked jail director Raul Bonasco for a list of members of the Justice Services Advisory Board and their emails. I'm still waiting. I also asked my council member to get the list for me, but she has not done so. Ever since Sam Page elected county executive and Lisa Clancy was selected as council chair, we have heard quite a bit from both about diversity, equity, and inclusion. They have continually preached against discrimination, sexism, racism, and systemic racism. What has been overlooked in all of the preaching from the Reverend Page and Reverend Clancy is that both got their positions by stepping over an African-American woman. When Steve Stinger resigned, Hazel Erby should have replaced him as county executive as that was the tradition. The council member with the most seniority from the same party is selected. That is what happened when Jean McNary resigned. That is what happened after Buzz Westfall died in office. But Sam Page stepped on and then over Councilwoman Erby to get the county executive job. Lisa Clancy helped prevent Mrs. Erby from becoming the first female African-American county executive. Then when it came to selecting a council chair at the beginning of the year, an African-American woman was in line to be selected, but she was stepped over by Councilwoman Clancy. Excuse me, Councilwoman Clancy now needs to step aside as council chair and let an African-American have the job. It would be the right thing to do. She would be practicing what she has been preaching. Thank you for listening to my comments, Tom Sullivan. Comments from Diane Unger, 26 Baxter Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. Excuse me. County Executive Page, Council Chair Clancy, and council members. Residents of St. Louis County have been so disadvantaged. You have disadvantaged all our churches, all holy communions, confirmations, grade school, high school, and college graduation ceremonies have been disrupted. You have disadvantaged everyone who planned a family reunion or a wedding, and sadly, many funerals. You have disadvantaged businesses, both large and small, medical facilities and practices, swimming pools, libraries, retail shopping malls, parks, sporting activities, summer camps, and the list goes on. You had put the stop order on all these entities due to COVID-19 virus. Our county and city were handcuffed and forced into a devastating hold pattern of limbo. Yet, in your supposed wisdom, mobs of people, where they came from, we do not know, have been allowed to gather, march, and protest throughout our county. Social distancing was nowhere to be found. How could you do that to us? Just as businesses and retail malls are trying to come back, the marching and protesting shut many of them down again. And we may soon wonder why there might be an increase in COVID cases. And we will place that accountability right in your laps. Thank you very much. Actually, no, thank you very much. Your governance has destroyed so much in our county. You have denied businesses their opportunities to survive. You have denied God-fearing Christians their right to worship in a church. Meanwhile, you are allowing protesters to rule the streets. If the county can be fully open for protesting while disregarding social distancing, then the county can be fully open for normal living. What is your agenda? What is your goal for our county? We have all went late, we all wonder. Submitted by Diane Unger.
Moving along, our next public comment is from Anna Crafton, 7204 Christopher, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. I am against having a for-profit medical facility move into a residential home on Christopher Drive, as are the 484 people so far who have signed the online petition. Big business has no business in residential neighborhoods. Dr. Page, we are counting on you to do the right thing and say no to Montinito. From Jeff Lowery, 7186 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. I live next door to the above-mentioned property, 7190 Christopher Drive. I am writing to you again this week to request that the company known as Montinito not be allowed to open their commercial business in our neighborhood. As you know from previous letters, I am opposed on the basis that a medical treatment facility should not be allowed to open up their commercial for-profit business right in the heart of a purely residential neighborhood. It is just not consistent with the surrounding area to have that sort of a commercial business located right in the middle of nothing but residential homes. I repeat myself in saying we have no problems with their business of treating individuals with eating disorders. It is a very worthwhile business pursuit that I am sure has benefited many needing individuals. It is just not appropriate to be running a business of that sort right in a residential neighborhood. I wish nothing but the best for individuals dealing with those medical diagnoses involving eating disorders. It is just a matter of time and a place and a residential neighborhood is not the time or place for such a commercial business. It is my understanding that a review process is in place to do what is hopefully a more detailed look into the appropriateness of this business opening in a neighborhood. I am requesting, if not pleading with you, to overturn your original decision. We as neighbors should not be having to deal with all of these headaches and aggravation. We are all tax-paying citizens of St. Louis County and feel extremely let down up to this point that this has not gone away up to this point. Multiple residents have been writing letters for weeks, if not months, now trying to petition to have this go away, and here we are still having to write letters because up to now nothing has officially been done about it. It should not take this long. I want this headache, stress, and aggravation to go away as soon as possible. Please reassess your original decision and make the correct decision this time and tell Montinito that they will have to take their business to a more appropriate location. Once again, I thank you for your time. From Kate Stratton, 10253 Eddingham Terrace, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128. I'm writing to celebrate the good news in our state. As of last week, we are on a downward trend in hospitalizations, new infections, fewer number of patients on ventilators, and fewer patients in the ICU. It saddens me to see the county council never corrects or adjusts itself based on new information. When the mantra was to flatten the curve, residents responded by staying home, even to the detriment of their own financial prospects. Now that we have accomplished that, when will you lift these draconian restrictions and open back up? Yesterday, a WHO official stated that asymptomatic transmissions are very rare. So let's stop making people wear masks, especially now with 90-degree temperatures, and make it a choice for those that are immune-compromised. People like and need to socialize, see people smile, go to church, enjoy our kids' sports activities, and be able to swim in a chlorinated pool in the heat of summer. Stop the fear tactics for power and control and trying to be our parents. We don't need you to do that. In addition, I want to honor and thank our officers that have been working 12-hour days. It is a blessing to have police officers that care about our communities. Without the police, we would have a third-world country. County, excuse me. Also, please stop complaining about us writing to you and lead the county back to profitability and prosperity. Thank you. From Christine Lowery, 7186 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. I am writing to you again in reference to 7190 Christopher. It is my understanding that is a second review of Montinito's claim that they are a group home is possibly underway. I am asking the planning department and county councilor's office to please review all the facts. We have researched what Montinito is and is not and have conveyed that every week at the county council meeting for almost two months now. The citizens on Christopher request that you please do a true and accurate review on this review. If everyone involved had just done a little bit more research before they stamped this approval with Montinito, we would not be in this situation. Montinito knew what they were doing. They have done the same thing to several cities in the past. The last one is DuPage County in Illinois. The facility just opened in May, by the way. Montinito stated this facility would be a group home. Illinois group home ratio was eight to two, just like Nito, I'm sorry, just like Missouri. We have been told there are over eight at this time. I said it, I said it before, I said it before, this is a bait and switch on Montinito's part. Please do not let them do this to us. Please do not make the same mistake twice. And our last comment this evening is from Judy Clark at 7204 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. We are a small group of almost 500 folk that want to save our neighborhood from the multimillion-dollar company Montinito. For the past two and a half months, the council meetings have hosted dozens of our letters. Sometimes they are even read out loud. But unfortunately, that is all that happens. We have written and listened faithfully every week. No action or response is ever received. We have endured the coronavirus, the CARES money expenditures, the debacle at the Ozarks, and most recently, the George Floyd protests. We are simply asking for one little thing. Reverse the wrong decision to allow this business in our residential neighborhood. This is very low-hanging fruit. It would be wonderful to see the council accomplish one little thing. Thank you for your time. Madam Chair, that is all the comments.
Thank you, Diane. We need to go back to an item in Communications. It was let known to me that item number nine actually is in order and requires a seconded motion. I was curious about that, but no one interjected, so we need to go back to that item. So this is item number nine on Communication. Receive file and the issuance of requests for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second? Dunaway.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Dunaway. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 132, introduced by Councilmember Trachis and Ordnance, authorizing the county executive to grant a sewer easement within Olendorf County Park to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District for the purpose of connecting an existing restroom in Olendorf Park to the public sewer and to execute necessary documents. Bill number 133, introduced by Councilmember Trachis and Ordnance, authorizing the county executive to grant five subterranean easements located under various park parcels in the area of Wells and Bauer Roads to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District, MSD, and to allow MSD to construct and maintain a sanitary deep tunnel, authorizing acceptance of payment totaling $2,582.56 from MSD in compensation for said easements, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation or his designee to execute necessary documents. Bill number 134, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and Ordnance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $9,145 from Washington University, appropriating the same for support of the Department of Public Health's National Network of Sexually Transmitted Diseases Clinical Prevention Training Center project, and authorizing the accounting director of the Department of Public Health or her designee to execute necessary documents. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Please proceed with perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 5, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Trachis, and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number 5.
Bill number 5 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Please hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 36, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to hold Bill number 36.
Bill number 36 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Sorry, I move to hold Bill number 76.
Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 109, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
We will hold this bill. We do have a committee of the whole that we are in the process of scheduling for next week. Bill number 109 is held.
Bill number 109 is held.
Bill number 123, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I received some additional comments today from some council members, so I will move to hold Bill 123 and probably have a subbill ready for next week.
Bill number 123 is held.
Bill number 124, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 124.
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 124 is perfected.
Bill number 125, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill number 125, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 125 is perfected.
Bill number 126, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill number 126.
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 126 is perfected.
Bill number 127, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill number 127.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 127 is perfected.
Bill number 128, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 128.
Second, Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 128 is perfected.
Bill number 129, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 129.
Second, Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 129 is perfected.
Bill number 130, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 130.
Second, Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 130 is perfected.
Bill number 131, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 131.
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 131 is perfected. I move to advance Bill number 131 to the final passage order of business. Is there a second?
Second, Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 131 is advanced to the final passage order of business. Clerk, please read the bill for final passage.
Bill number 131, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $100,000 from the Missouri Department of Higher Education and More Force Development, appropriating the same for support of the Department of Human Services Return Strong Missouri Rapid Response Program, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents.
I move to take up Bill number 131 for final passage. Is there a second?
Second, Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 131, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 131 is finally passed. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute Bill number two for Bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Substitute Bill for Bill number 385. Substitute Bill number two for Bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 120, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 120.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 120, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 120 is finally passed.
Bill number 121, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill number 121.
Second, Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 121, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 121 is finally passed.
Bill number 122, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 122.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 122, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 122 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have two resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, and Clancy.
Could you please read this resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Farhin Khan, a rising senior at Parkway Central High School, Parkway Central, has been a tireless activist for change within her school community; and whereas Farhin was compelled to found Students for Progressive Change after several distressing incidents of racism directed at both staff and students occurred at Parkway Central; and whereas the goal of Students for Progressive Change is for students to create a more inclusive and racially literate environment at Parkway Central; and whereas Farhin's and Students for Progressive Change's accomplishments and efforts include revisions to the racial discrimination policy at Parkway Central, lobbying the English Department to incorporate into the curriculum voices of diverse and intersectional authors as well as books that foster those characters, lobbying the Social Studies Department to incorporate into the curriculum voices of minorities, with the aim of teaching a more accurate and complete view of human history, fostering conversations, events, and opportunities for everyone at the school to interact on a personal level to break down barriers, development of morning school announcements to educate the school community during designated history months, including Latinx and African-American, and provided guidance to staff and teachers regarding expansion of racially literate education through student panels and staff trainings by teaching tolerance; and whereas the Princeton University's Princeton Prize in Race Relations identifies and recognizes high-school-age students who significantly engage and challenge their schools or communities to advance racial equity in order to promote respect and understanding among all people; and whereas Farhin Khan is the recipient of the Princeton University's Princeton Prize in Race Relations Award for 2020 for the Greater St. Louis Region; and whereas Farhin continues her work as an advocate for people of color even when it has not been easy and external and organizational barriers, including personal attacks, have been put in her way; and Farhin has addressed those barriers by pushing Parkway Central Administration to understand the importance and necessity of change and by working to educate parents on why a new racial discrimination policy is necessary for students' safety and ability to learn; and whereas although the COVID-19 global pandemic caused the cancellation of both a ceremony at Parkway Central to honor Farhin and Princeton's Annual Symposium on Race Relations, which Farhin was invited to attend, it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause to honor a young person who has pushed through many barriers to engage her school community in the important work of advancing racial equity and understanding. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the county council congratulates Farhin Khan on the occasion of being named the recipient of the 2020 Princeton Prize in Race Relations for the Greater St. Louis Region. Section two, the acting administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Ms. Farhin Khan as a permanent token of the council's esteem and gratitude for her contributions to the community.
Thank you so much. I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second, Daze.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Moving on to resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for adoption of resolution number two, please.
Second, Harder.
Please read the resolution, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution, whereas over many years, Xena Hackworth has demonstrated an unceasing commitment as a guardian of the American electoral process and its attendant protection of our liberty and freedom; and whereas Xena Hackworth is a committed advocate who serves or has served in leadership roles in many organizations, including as founder and president of This Race Will Self-Destruct, bringing a closer look at right-to-life and HIV/AIDS concerns in the African-American community, founder and president of More Rebellious Members, a pro-life outreach to African-American pastors, board member of Pure Hope National Sexual Violence Resource Center, and board member of Families for Home Education; and whereas Xena Hackworth is a member, frequent speaker, and guest at conferences and conventions of international, national, state, and local organizations, including the United Nations Commission on the Status of Women, Learn Life Educational and Resource Network, America's oldest African-American pro-life organization, the National Black Pro-Life Coalition, and Pure Hope National Sexual Violence Resource Center. Ms. Hackworth also frequently appears on both national network and local affiliate news shows, addressing a wide variety of issues, including First and Second Amendment rights; and whereas Xena Hackworth has worked tirelessly in support of Republican Party candidates, including President Donald Trump, Congressman Todd Akin, Senator Jim Tallon, Gary Gill, and William Bill Federer, and served as an alternate Missouri delegate to the Republican National Convention in 2012, St. Louis County Republican Central Committee Woman and President of the Tesson Ferry Township Republican Club; and whereas Ms. Hackworth is also an active and engaged member of countless organizations, including Missouri Women for Kavanaugh, Missouri Women Standing with Todd Akin, the Missouri State Homeschooling Organization, and the National Rifle Association; and whereas in 2018, Xena Hackworth was one of only 900 worldwide invited to and in attendance at the opening of the United States Embassy in Jerusalem, Israel; and whereas Ms. Hackworth considers herself a professional volunteer and in that capacity serves or has served in leadership roles as a board member of Families for Home Education, committee chairman and charter organization representative for Greater St. Louis Area Council Homeschool Cub Scout PAC 142, and founder and committee chairman and charter organization representative for Greater St. Louis Area Council Homeschool Boy Scout Troop 142; and whereas Ms. Hackworth has been a devoted and loving wife to Brian, her husband of 34 years, loving and caring mother of 12 children and nine grandchildren, and is also a faithful member of Grace Church in Arnold, Missouri; and whereas each year the Tesson Ferry Township Republican Club honors one club member as their Republican of the Year. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the county council congratulates Xena Hackworth on the occasion of Ms. Hackworth's selection as the 2020 Tesson Ferry Republican Township Club Republican of the Year. Section two, the acting administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Ms. Xena Hackworth as a permanent token of the council's esteem.
Is there a second?
Second, Harder.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
I abstain.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Abstain.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are five ayes and two abstentions.
Resolution number two is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Fourth District.
Receive file and the matter be dropped from the order of business.
Still ordered.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Hold on the order of business, please.
Still ordered.
Moving on to new business this evening, we have one prepared order. That prepared order is in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate bought by him as trustee at the collector's various tax sales.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Are there any further comments from the council? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.